Uh.
I'm sorry.
Hello. Are you coming in or are you going?
Ah, it's a little like.
I'm not sure if they are.
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, that's how it like. I was pulling up the calendar. Uh, maybe.
I just.
If I ask for you, at least I'll read some files that could miss. Or. We. They. Got the excursion. Same. Parents. Yeah. Still. Not still. I'm like. I'm not the one that's. See.
It's a. Just about. I don't. We're talking. But. I don't. Whatever. Like in the most of all, it's a problem.
Not why.
Did you hear that stuff?
Me?
I don't.
Well. About that. You would say. Say what? Thank you.
I'm using it all the time. I appreciate it. How much? Um. Well. Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is kind of. Maybe just tell me. We have. It's hard for us. Possibly.
But, but be honest. If not.
That is. We've way. You don't expect. So. So here. Your ass. Oh.
So like. Here's. But I can't shake it. It's like. But like.
There's.
So he can do this.
Right. Oh.
Yeah, so.
How are you? Good. Just. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Better. Maybe. But it's. Seem. To. Well, like. It was better. Sure. I do that. So. We. Worked. No. Dead. Came. How are you? I'm good. Well, now that's not. Yes, ma'am. The briefing. And then. The briefing. And then everything starts. You're up. Uh, the timestamp is six zero six. And we're opening up our work session and briefing session Tuesday, April. Oh, are we? Are we on?
Yeah.
No. All right. Uh, Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty three. Uh. Three. And, uh, working with that. We will immediately to, uh, work session briefing session to discuss agenda items and interim city manager, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The first item that we have for discussion is, uh, briefing, uh, presentation. From A. And what we've done there in council, the solicitation services for the executive recruitment services. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Tile and Mr. Jennifer to go over these items, uh, of now what we plan to do.
What plan?
Uh, normally what we do is that the city manager talks about the consent to that.
Of course, okay.
Yeah. And then we'll go into the. Go three.
Absolutely, that's exactly what we're doing. Uh, consent item four A is consider a formance to various boards of commission. Will you sign to give community and economic development corporation, city planning and zoning commission. And the community engagement advisory board, the march commission. And the T I F board with the adoption of the attached resolution. So Mayor Council, I'm gonna ask Ms. Rulmore to elaborate on this item. I know she's been instrumental in tracking the board of formance for you.
Thank you. I'm the city manager, Mayor Council. So what this is an opportunity for the city council to take main action via the attached resolution. Confirming the appointment not to wait with their last regular city council meeting. It also allows the council to consider, uh, filling the other, uh, four appointments, uh, from the interviews that council conducted in December. So that's what. That's.
Okay. Um.
And there's an executive session in here that's intended to that to allow the council to do.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Um.
That's agenda item under executive session on. Second page.
The agenda that I read online earlier. Talked about. Uh. Appointments to. Oh, there it is, there it is. Name it. Oh, that's. That's still under consent. What happened to?
It's. Here you go. There we go. That's true. There we go.
Okay, yeah, that did not have the three executive sessions. I was. To Mayor. Okay. Uh, yeah, could. Coincident with that particular item is executive session number two. So, ci- city council, what we need to do somehow is work the arrangement and the timing. So that, yes, we see what the briefing is to talk about for that, which, uh, city secretary has already discussed. And then coincident with that, have the executive session, if there's any additional appointments, applications to come out of the executive session. So that it may be something that we can vote on. If it will come out of the executive session. Is that confusing? Let me say it wasn't. Put it together. You can see what's happening. Item three B is identification of individuals who have already interviewed. And request there basically is should we, can we, as a city council, appoint those individuals to vacancies without new interviews? Or base those appointments on the individuals already held? And coincident with that is item number two, executive session, which also discusses appointments to P and Z. Uh, which could be coincident with that consent to do the interviews of someone who have already interviewed. Two kind of tied together and it. I can explain it in more. Detail when we go into that executive session. So item number three B, which senior secretary just briefed very briefly. Will tie into executive session number two. Possibly, depending on what we discuss.
Mayor, if you don't have a slate, you wanna have a discussion, why don't you just move it off consent, move it to the individual items? Have the executive sessions will come back and point wherever the council wants there.
We can do that, yeah. That's why I said they're coincident, they tie together and I, Mr. Hager, thank you for that. So, everybody okay with that? So we're gonna move three B into individual consideration. And we will do executive session prior to that, so any actions taken will be conforming to procedure that we have. That would be very good. All right. Now, interim city manager, uh, we can go to, um. Council, we can do two A, which is council.
Yeah, Mary. You've got, you've got the resolution for, you've got the resolution for fuel and oil, which is an amended item. It's on the agenda.
Item four B.
Four B.
Right, you finished four A. And that stopped.
We're on four D.
Now we're on four P. Okay.
All right, then council, the same agenda, item four D. Is consider a resolution authorizing authority of purchase agreement for purchase of gasoline and diesel. View from Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC, Lieutenant County Commissioners Board Contract two zero two dash zero seven zero. During the period of April the seventh, twenty twenty three. Through April the sixth, twenty twenty seven, for city fleet and equipment. An estimated expenditure amount of two million, nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety nine. Now, this authorization will cover two hundred and fifty nine thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars for purchasing fuel. As the basis. For the remainder of fiscal year of twenty twenty three. An estimated one million, seven hundred and seventy six thousand through April. April the sixth of twenty twenty seven. I've asked, uh, Public Works Director and, uh, Mr. ASAP Lo to answer any additional questions you may have. But the city uses approximately eighty nine thousand gallons of unleaded gasoline. Um. And forty seven thousand gallons of diesel per year. If you have to answer any additional questions you may have on this item.
Any questions, comments?
I can remember what those numbers are.
I've asked my, uh, team to come up with those numbers based on prior usage.
What type of vehicles, uh, is consuming ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel?
The ultra-low sulfur diesel? That's the standard diesel they used. That's what you find at any, any mall. That, uh, uh, was made mandatory in two thousand and seven. That'd be all your diesel vehicles, fire trucks, uh, utility trucks, such as that.
Uh, question for purchasing, was this the only cooperative purchasing arrangement for these two items available?
Actually, we've been using the current country contract because of, of the high volume that's generated by the cities around subways. And that's where we get the best price. Because if we have to go out by ourselves, we won't get that price that we're getting.
Understood, but, uh, there are several co-ops, as I can recall, H G A C, for example, is one of them, Terrence, one of them. So, uh, my question is. Was this the only one in the entire universe of this type of fuel that was doing this?
No, sir, but we in this area, we are on that Dallas. Uh, plant pricing, which is the last footwork. It covers the northern gas and using the Austin.
Okay.
Uh, one other question with what just happened yesterday with OPEC. OPEC is cutting a million barrels a day, a billion, uh, starting in the month of May. And listening to the stock reports and the crude and west, uh, you know, west Texas crude. Everything is exploding. They already see that happening. Is there some clause in this agreement for inflationary between now and twenty twenty seven? Like, who knows what's gonna be happening? It's already gonna be kicking in in the month of May with OPEC pulling barrels a gallon a day off, off their production. And we've already seen west Texas crude's got up with, uh, three and a half dollars and. As a result, that went up seven dollars a share yesterday. So, what's in there to allow you or the city in the contracting to incorporate the inflation that could occur?
Actually, the contract is based on the O P S price.
Okay.
At that time that we are ordering.
Okay.
With the fixed in, uh, commission that the vendor gets. Because the prices fluctuate, they make up for changes in the prices.
So whatever on the spot market that day, whenever we pump it out, whenever we receive it, that's the price we're gonna get.
Yes, sir.
Got it? Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So, now. Uh. Interim City Manager Brown. All right, thank you, sir. Uh, we, we can go to briefing, solicitation services and executive services.
Yes, sir. Speaking. Um. Ms. Jennifer.
Come back to the calendar. So, good evening, Mayor Council. Just wanted to give you a briefing on our process for the executive recruitment services and search. So, working with Mr. Sakale on the timeline here, so we are going to put it out there on the, out there on the street for solicitation, request or proposal. We plan to release it on Monday, April tenth. We have to comply with advertising it for two times, so within two weeks. So, we plan to get the proposals back on April twenty-eighth. We'll do the opening, we'll do the evaluations and be able to bring it back to you and hopefully in May for approval and for your input. Just wanted to give you an idea of what the scope of work is. It's a pretty comprehensive scope of work. This is your opportunity to kind of let us know as we are preparing the solicitation document, if there's anything you'd like to include or take out. But the scope of work will include, so assist Council or the designated to develop a profile, do the advertisement, do the solicitation of the candidates, review those initial applicants, provide reports, background of each candidate, the strengths, accomplishments, interview them, facilitate a final interview process with the Council, bring to you a finalist, a list of finalists, assist with contract negotiations as needed, coordinate all the correspondence with the candidates, travel arrangements, record keeping, and conduct a detailed reference check on the recommended finalists if we choose for them to do that. The expectations, again, is the marketing piece of that, which is the profile, it's the recruitment materials, the aggressive marketing strategies to recruit candidates, doing the sourcing, which is the screening process, the preliminary interviews of those who apply and report all the findings back to Council, as doing the assessment, so the final candidate recommendations, the interviews and assistance with Council in the selection process, doing the background checks and the reference checking, as well as providing consulting services if we need some compensation packages, develop the timeline for activities so we know how long this is going to take, provide you written status reports. So, that is the scope of work that we're going to include into the solicitation materials. Anything that's not covered up here, this is in general that you feel needs to be included that we're not thinking of in this search.
Does it pretty well follow the solicitation that we put out two years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, help me remember, didn't we, I'm thinking back, didn't we, as a Council, create an ad hoc of three of us to evaluate the finalists for the executive search firm? Did we interview those? And then we three selected the one who brought that to Council for final approval? Didn't? Okay. So, so for members of the Council that were here, when we did that, just for background information, we're free to do that again. And when the time comes, we can look at that if we decide that we want to do that, that three-person ad hoc, we can certainly do that. So, but we did that in the past and it kind of moved things along a little faster than having all seven of us review all of the individuals or the firms that have responded to the solicitation. A little bit of expediency, yeah. So, we can do that as well and those individuals who will, if the Council chooses to do that ad hoc, then the Council will choose those individuals and the number of people up that ad hoc tend to perform that. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, we can move into Executive Sessions. And I think, Mr. Hager, I know timeframe, we should be able to accomplish all three of these before seven.
Don't forget, you've got the calendar.
Our city calendar, right there. Maybe we had looked at that. Any questions on that?
And Mayor, there's not really anything on here that you couldn't take to the discussion at the next meeting if people would receive on.
So, what was that comment? You said there wasn't anything pressing on the calendar.
On the calendar.
Wait till next time. The calendar's pretty much set to here.
One thing to remember, we've discussed it before, June seventeenth is here in Dunkinville, and that is a rotational process. So, June seventeen for Juneteenth is going to be a pretty big deal for our city.
Okay. All right. So, the Strategic Work Plan and Budget Impact Town Hall is proposed for Thursday, April twenty-seventh. Council's pre-budget is for your twenty-three, twenty-four workshop. So, the staff is requesting a selection between Thursday, June eighth, or Thursday, June fifteenth. City Manager's Budget Town Hall is proposed for Thursday, August tenth. A public hearing on the tax rate and the budget tentative date is Thursday, August twenty-fourth. And then the adoption of the budget would occur on Tuesday, the twenty-first.
We've all proposed these plans. Obviously, the Council wants us to change them. We have to do something. We will do something as soon as possible.
Okay. City Secretary did go into July and August, but we don't have those. So, maybe have tomorrow sometime? If you could send that email to everyone outlining the budget dates, again, probably easier for us to put them while we're on the calendar.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, then, for giving us the opportunity to do those things.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, again, Mr. Hager, do we have time to do all three executive sessions before seven?
Yep.
Okay. All right. With that, we will recess, brief the working session. Hold on. Absolutely.
Yes.
Mic check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, mic check. We are on, thank you, okay. All right, so to ensure that we have that properly recorded, we're going to go back to consent agenda. That is item number four on our agenda. And I did state that item four A has been moved to individual consideration. And we will take that under consideration when we get to item five on the agenda. And city secretary, that leaves one item for the consent agenda, please read item four B.
Thank you, mayor and council. Four B, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel from Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC through Tarrant County Commissioners Court contract two zero two three dash oh seven oh during the period April seven twenty twenty-three through April six twenty twenty-seven for city fleet and equipment in an estimated expenditure amount of two million nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you, Chair, let entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, item four B.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve of Mr. McNabb Burnett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Contreras, council please vote. Thank you, unanimous consent. Moving on to item five on our agenda, items for individual consideration, I'm actually going to change what I said. I said we would talk to three B first, but it actually would be better to do that with item five D because there was an action taken as a result of executive session that coincides with best expression of that in five D. So we would do items five A, B, and C, then we will take item three B off consent and that one, take that, that particular point, all right. So, item five A, well, let me preface the next steps that we're going to be going through here. All three of our items for individual consideration are public hearings. And the manner in which that we conduct public hearings, I'll go through the procedures for that. It calls for all individuals that are, we first, we have a staff member that presents the item. Then we call for the public hearing, and everyone in favor of the item, I give ten minutes in the aggregate for everyone to speak in favor, and then we give ten minutes in the aggregate for those that may oppose the SUP. So even though X number of people may be present, we take ten minutes only for the in favor and ten minutes only for those who are opposed. Once we close the public hearing, then the item is opened up for discussion by city council. And during that discussion with city council, we may call forward again the presenter from staff, and we may call forward the applicant if the applicant is present. That is our procedure for all of our items for public hearings. So item five A, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of David Jones, applicant, representing Chris Kitch Agent Owner for a zoning change from DD Downtown District to LOR Local Office Retail District on Richard F. Hale, abstract five six six, page zero eight zero, tract one eight, more commonly known as six zero nine and six eleven South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Texas. Representing, Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor, council. The request is a zoning change to attract prospective tenants. The future land use map designates this area's opportunity, Area Ten, being the downtown district. The current zoning is downtown Duncanville District, the urban living frontage section thereof in the downtown Duncanville District. And the proposed zoning district is for local office retail. The image on the left is an aerial showing the subject property being on the northwest corner of Wheatland in Maine. The image on the right is a zoning map showing the zoning being the downtown Duncanville District in blue with local office retail district to the south and neighborhood office retail district to the southeast. The image on the left is a breakdown of the dance studio and the current office space being some three thousand square feet. The image on the right is a photo of the street, of the property from the street and a overview of the property on the image in the bottom right showing the parking lot and the structure. Thirteen mailings were sent out for this request, we had one reply in favor and no replies in opposition to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero with the following conditions, that the laundromat use is not permitted by right, and the professional office regional scale use is not permitted by right on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We will now open this item for a public hearing. Timestamp for opening the public hearing, city secretary, is seven fifty-two. All individuals, no, all individuals present, I'm gonna say other than the applicants, Dr. Guchajin and Mr. Jones. As applicants, your conversation will come after we have the public hearing. Any individuals present as citizens that wish to speak, okay? So any individuals present that wish to speak in favor of this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to the aspect of the public hearing. And individuals present who wish to oppose this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Contreras. Second by Mr. Coons, council please vote on closing the public hearing. By unanimous vote, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Warren? And city council, it now is your opportunity and your time to ask any questions. And we do have the applicants here as well, so any questions of Mr. Warren or of the applicant, or of the applicants themselves. Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, mayor. I personally, I've read through this pretty carefully, and I don't have any objections to the request. But I do have a larger question in that when the downtown Duncanville District was developed, which is a long time ago, it was pretty restrictive to uses. And especially when it came to redoing a frontage of businesses on Main Street such that some folks that did changes had to go through a number of variances because they were trying to, our ordinance requires them to achieve a certain look that really isn't compatible with Duncanville, it was a boilerplate that we adopted out of South Lake to make it look like downtown South Lake or downtown Grapevine, and we just don't have that. So I've said all along, back then and even now, that I'd like to see us revisit that downtown Duncanville District in all its zoning restrictions that in the future people won't have to go through this because the zoning and the strict requirements for facelifts and changes, and if I'm not mistaken, that's all still in place, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna remind everyone that I think we should revisit that in its entirety somewhere down the road to loosen it up so folks won't have to come here and that we can review the uses and take some of the restrictions off to make it easier for businesses to come in and for property owners to rent or lease or to sell, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Contreras, I do understand what you're saying, and the proper move for that would be to discuss that or to direct, we as a council or you may request the city manager to review that downtown district in its entirety versus asking Mr. Warren as the city planner. But I'm sure Mr. Brown has heard that and has made note, I'm sure.
Yes, all right, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, the chair will obtain a motion to approve.
I'm going to start. Second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve of Mr. Contreras, a motion, a second by Mr. McNabb Burnett. Council please vote, this is to approve, item five A. Unanimously approved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, as a result of the vote, I will bring back an actual ordinance to be put on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Item five B, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Ali Assi, applicant and owner for the approval of a zoning change from SF-ten, single-family residential ACS zero point eight, I'm sorry, that's Acres, zero point three six six, more commonly known as one seven zero three South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Mr. Warren, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor, council, the request for a zoning change at seventeen oh three South Main Street. The request is to expand an existing parking lot for the purpose of a future restaurant in an existing structure. The future land use map designation is opportunity area nine, the Main Street District. The current zoning is single-family ten, single-family residential district, and the proposed zoning is LOR Local Office Retail. So this section is an L shape, you can see on the image on the left, it's an aerial. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at our last meeting on Mar- on March thirteenth, approved a replat to include this entire area. So this entire subject property is hoping to obtain a zoning change to be part of local office retail district. So the existing, as you can see in the image on the right, uh, the existing area is in its entirety local office retail. So this preliminary site plan shows the proposed fire lane at the rear of the property and the fifteen proposed parking spaces to the south of the property. There's also green space at the south and east of, of this area as long, as well as a, a green space to the south of the existing structure. Four mailings were sent out for this request, we had one reply in favor. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, sir. We will now open this item, special use permit. Item five B, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Ali Assi, applicant owner for the approval of zoning change from SF-ten to LOR on Softwood seventeen oh three South Main Street. I am opening this item for a public hearing, the timestamp for opening the public hearing is seven fifty-nine. Any individuals present who wish to speak in favor of this SUP, please step forward. Seeing none, any individuals present who wish to speak in opposition to this SUP, please come forward.
Mayor Gordon, this isn't the SUP, this straight zoning case.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my stand corrected, it's just a zoning change, not an SUP. Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to pu- close the public hearing on item five B.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing on item five B by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by Mr. Coons, council please vote. Thank you.
Mayor and council, as a result of your action, I'll bring back the appropriate ordinance, place it on the consent agenda at your next meeting.
Thank you. Item five C, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Joy Gabriels, applicant representing Tommy J. Wynn, owner, to include this SUP for art studio and adopt an ordinance to change the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map on AMG Merrill, abstract eight eight four, page zero seventy-five, tract forty-seven, forty-eight, and portion of tract forty-three ACS Acres zero point eight three four, more commonly known as two one four South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Texas. Mr. Warren, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor, council. The request is to attain a SUP for an art studio. An art studio is, as defined in our CZO, is an establishment engaged in the sale or exhibit of artworks such as paintings, sculptures, macrame, knit goods, stitchery, photography, or pottery. Art studios are also engaged in the creations of said artworks but do not provide instructional classes, being the major difference between art instruction studio. Future land use map designation is opportunity area ten, downtown district, the zoning district is downtown Duncanville District, urban living frontage. The image on the left shows the property on the southeast corner of Maine and Freeman Street. Image on the right is a zoning map showing that is in the downtown Duncanville District in blue. This is a floor plan of the area in which the art studio will be conducted. The considerations for specific use permits is called out in section six point five, uh, six point zero five, uh, D in our CZO, A through I. And twelve mailings were sent out, we had two responses in favor with zero responses in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, I will now open the public hearing on item five C. Timestamp to open that is eight zero two. Any individuals present who wish to speak in favor of this item, please come forward. Seeing none, any individuals present who wish to speak in opposition to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. McNabb Burnett, seconded by Mr. Coons, council please vote on closing the public hearing. Unanimous approval to close the public hearing, timestamp eight zero three. Council, any questions of Mr. Warren? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve item five C.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Coons, second by Mr. McNabb Burnett, council please vote on item five C. Thank you, unanimously approved.
Mayor, excuse me for interrupting, but apparently in our desire to get through our business, we did not actually vote on five B. We, we motioned to close five B but not a motion to approve the zoning case.
So I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by council member Cherry. Thank you for that, correction, city attorney.
Thank you all.
Mayor, excuse me, in, in moving forward without that vote, we didn't have time to ask questions, and I do have a question.
Correct, question, go ahead.
Okay, it's a, it's a simple one. In, in this design of this parking area, and, and I totally agree that they need parking there, so I'm, I'm in favor of this, but are they, are they completely complying with our landscape requirements as it relates to parking lots?
So they do have the green space shown on the south and east and also green space to the north. Uh, they're, they're adding additional green space. The, they do show additional trees on the, on the southern portion. I don't have the twenty percent figure, however, they're not required, they're not beholden to that twenty percent figure as they're not adding a new structure or a new development, so that doesn't come into play, but we are very pleased to see that green space is included in the proposal.
Good enough, thank you.
Any more discussion or questions? Okay, we have a motion to approve, please vote. Unanimously approved, thank you. Item five D is take any necessary action as a result of the executive session.
Yes, mayor and council, as a result of the executive session, I would propose to state the following motion for your consideration. Motion to confirm the appointment of Robert D. Brown as interim city manager at a salary of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars under the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session and direct the city attorney to author and a contract to reflect the salary in terms and conditions that have been suggested by city council and authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you, city attorney, uh, council, that is item three, that is the executive session, item three. Motion as read by city attorney.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by council member Cherry.
No, he was.
Oh, was that?
She beat me.
Mr.?
He won't last.
Mr. Contr- seconded by Mr. Contreras. So we are voting on executive session, item three, motion as read by city attorney. City council please vote. Unanimously approved, unanimously approved, thank you. For item one, executive session, city council shall convene pursuant to section five fifty-one zero seventy-two Texas Local Government Code to deliberate the sale, exchange, lease, or value real property owned by the city south of Wheatland, east of Maine, and west of Highway sixty-seven. There is no action to be taken on that particular item. Executive session number two, the city council shall convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code section five fifty-one point zero seventy-four, personnel matters to discuss appointments, dismissals, and/or duties of the city of Duncanville Planning and Zoning Commission. I am going to call on city secretary, she has a slate. Uh, this combines the slate for this particular item as well as the slate of individuals to be appointed in item three B. City secretary, please read the full slate.
Thank you, mayor. Exhibit A, city appointments being confirmed from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, minute order to the City Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Carolyn Thompson, appointment for one year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. To the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Board, Mr. Nella Payne, CEO, COO, position to complete an unexpired term to August twenty twenty-three. Community Engagement Advisory Board, Ms. Linda Lydia, appointment for two-year term. Mr. Brian Kaiser, appointment for two-year term. Multicultural Commission, Mr. Homer Finn Cannon, appointment for two-year term. Ms. Nidzi Gutierrez, appointment for two-year term. The Arts Commission, Ms. Sarah Macias, appointment for three-year term. And then the City Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Grady Smithy, appointment to fill an unexpired term until August of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the actions to be taken as a result of executive session number two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabb Burnett, second by council member Cherry. Council please vote. Unanimously approved, thank you. That concludes and completes all of our business for this evening. Therefore, our city council is closed, I'm sorry, city council is adjourned, the timestamp is eight zero nine, thank you very much.
So, what's gonna happen is people are gonna believe what they wanna believe. Cause basically Patricia Eben said, the woman signed.